Good morning and welcome to the April 17th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. There's a few announcements this morning before the commission meeting, so first I'd like to invite Cindy Lee with Environmental Resources to talk about the Waste Tire Event this week.
Good morning.
Good morning, Cindy Lee with Environmental Resources. Good morning, everybody. I am so excited to share that later this week, we will be hosting a free waste tire event collection happening at the West Yard, and that's located at 4701 Southwest Street. And that's the northwest corner of West and 47 South Street. Aside from being an eyesore, tires are great breeding ground for mosquitoes and other pests. And we all know that mosquitoes and other pests can lead, can carry disease, and that can lead to a huge health issue. Businesses and government entities within Sedgwick County may come from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Thursday, and that's April 18th. The only exception to this would be tired business tires and tires that accept payment for tire disposals. Residents may come from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday, and that's on April 19th and April 20th. And residents may dispose up to 100 tire per load, and they should come ready to unload their own tires. We will be accepting all size of tires, from bike tires to tractor tires. However, tractor treads and belts will not be accepted. So if you have tires laying around your house, it's time to recondo them out of your life by dropping them off at this event. For more information, you can check us out on the county's website at sedgwickcounty.org, or look for the event on Facebook.
Very good. Well, thank you, Cindy, for being here, and this is a free event.
Yep.
Sponsored by Sedgwick County, paid for by our solid waste fees, correct?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and now I'd like to invite Laura Myers with Emergency Communications to talk about National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
I know it's a mouthful, so, good morning. My name is Laura Myers. I'm the Deputy Director for Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. I'm grateful for the time that's been allowed for me to speak today. Thank you for the opportunity. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is held every year during the second week of April. This time is set apart to celebrate and thank 911 professionals who dedicate their lives to serving citizens in need, and the field units who provide hands-on aid. Most of us learn from an early age what 911 is, but we often forget there's an actual person behind the voice that answers the call for help. That 911 professional carries an enormous responsibility of being available to answer the call and ensuring the appropriate resources arrive on scene to take over delivering assistance. A public safety telecommunicator is a vital link in the public safety response system. They are the first first responder, and they are tasked with being the calm voice in the chaos. 911 professionals are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. I'm humbled and honored to serve alongside the dedicated men and women of Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. 911 professionals are called to serve in a line of work that provides a near constant stream of helping people in crisis, coupled with nearly mind-boggling levels of multitasking and responsibility. Our center has already received so many kind words and gestures of gratitude this week from citizens and our partners in the field. We appreciate that recognition. If you've not yet had the opportunity to do so, I encourage you to reach out and help me thank the unseen heroes behind the headsets. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Laura. Is it, so every, around that country, this is the second week of April?
Correct.
Oh, that's good. Is it because it's right the week before taxes are due, and it's a lot of stress?
Yeah, perhaps.
Okay, I'm with you.
Well, thank you, and please pass on our thanks to all of the commissioners for the work of 911. It's kind of just like turning on a light switch. Everybody walks in a room, and they expect there to be light when you hit the switch. We expect there to be someone to answer our phones when you dial 911. But unlike turning on the light, it's not life or death. And so people call 911 probably on the worst day of their life, and expect to have response, and they have someone there to take care of whatever their needs are. So we thank you very much for what you do. It's a great service that you provide to our community. I know that you're unheralded, and that's what we're here today to do, to make sure that the public recognizes the service you provide. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one final announcement. Next week is the last week to submit online comments for the public forum related to land use issues regarding commercial wind and solar energy operations. You can find our online forum at our website, sedgwickcounty.org. On the agenda this morning, commissioners, we have a proclamation declaring National Infant Immunization Week, various board appointments, including appointments to the District 4 Citizens Advisory Board. Today, one of the reasons it is my favorite meeting of the year, it's our celebration for our Project Search interns. We have four grant or grant renewals for the Department of Corrections, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. And I believe there's an executive session for the fireboard following the regular meeting. So Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you, Kate. I want to welcome everyone that's in the room today. It is literally standing room only. We appreciate everyone being here. I know that a number of the folks here are for Project Search graduation. We will get to that here in a moment. We've got a number of items that we're going to cover before that, but I want to welcome everyone, especially that's here, and those that are joining us online and on KPTS this morning. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, April 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
invocation to be led by Caleb Bowman, Calvary Baptist Church in Derby. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Would you all bow with me in a word of prayer? Our Heavenly Father, I come before you in prayer this morning to thank you for the grace and kindness that you show to each one of us and to our community as a whole. Lord, you are so good to us, and we are very grateful for all of the many blessings that we have because of you. I ask for your wisdom to guide and direct in this meeting, for your will to be done through the decisions of these, your servants. Please guide their decisions to be fair and righteous, and bless them and their families, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bowman, thank you very much for being here this morning. I understand that you are one of our commissioners. Commissioner Howell's pastor, so we're welcome this morning. We appreciate you. Thank you. Nick, do you have anything you want to say?
No, just, I love Caleb Bowman. He's a great guy, and he's excellent church in the city of Derby, Calvary Baptist. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda, but just because you haven't signed up, that doesn't mean you can't speak. Anyone would like to speak this morning, please let me know. Seeing no one, next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring National Infant Immunization Week.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation this morning.
This is a proclamation for National Infant Immunization Week, whereas National Infant Immunization Week is an annual observation, observance to highlight the importance of protecting infants from vaccine-preventable diseases, and to celebrate the achievements of immunization programs and their partners in promoting healthy communities. And whereas in 2019, we are celebrating the 25th anniversary of National Infant Immunization Week. Since 1994, hundreds of communities across the United States have joined to celebrate the critical role vaccination plays in protecting our children, communities, and public health. And whereas several important milestones in controlling vaccine-preventable diseases among infants worldwide have already been reached, vaccines have drastically reduced infant death and disability caused by preventable diseases in the U.S. And now, and we can now protect infants and children from 14 vaccine-preventable diseases before age two. And whereas National Infant Immunization Week provides many opportunities, such as highlighting the dangers of vaccine-preventable diseases, especially to infants and young children, and educating parents and caregivers about the importance of vaccination in protecting their children from birth against vaccine-preventable diseases. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize the week of April 27th through May 4th, 2019, as National Infant Immunization Week. Adrian, Director of Sedgwick County Health Department, will come forward to accept this proclamation, and there you are.
Here I am. Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burton, Health Director.
We need to make a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion. We declare the week of April 27th through May 4th as National Infant Immunization Week.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Well, good morning, Adrian.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, and especially with such a full house. So in 2019, the week of April 27th through May 4th is designated as National Infant Immunization Week. Routine childhood immunizations provide a valuable level of protection that is vital to protecting the health of our entire community. Vaccines have drastically reduced the number of infant deaths caused by preventable diseases in the United States. Ensuring healthy children receive their recommended immunizations timely also helps to protect other children that are too young to receive vaccinations, for medical reasons. More than a century ago, an influenza outbreak started in Kansas in 1918, and became known as the deadliest epidemic in recorded history. The spread of illness was largely due to the movement of soldiers in World War I. Twenty years later, in 1938, the first vaccine for influenza was developed and given to U.S. soldiers during World War II with very different outcomes. Through immunization, we can now protect infants and children from 14 vaccine-preventable diseases before age two, including influenza, diphtheria, tetanus, which is whooping cough, pertussis, measles, mumps, rubella, and varicella, which is known as chickenpox. Recent studies indicate immunization rates among children born between 1994 and 2018 will prevent an estimated 419 million illnesses, over 26 million hospitalizations, and approximately 936,000 early deaths over the course of their lifetimes. Results from the National Immunization Survey has consistently shown that immunization rates for vaccines routinely given and recommended for children birth through age two remain at or near record levels. National Infant Immunization Week provides an opportunity to highlight the dangers of not having children vaccinated because of the preventable diseases, especially to infants and children. Educate parents and caregivers about the importance of vaccination and protecting their children from birth on against vaccine-preventable diseases and illnesses. Focuses attention on immunization achievements, and celebrates the accomplishments made possible through the partnering that has occurred, and step up efforts to protect children against vaccine-preventable diseases, and therefore giving them a healthy chance at life. Vaccines do prevent death and save lives. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Well, first of all, I think one of the little-known facts are that Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners is also the Board of Health for Sedgwick County. Although we don't normally meet as a Board of Health, every decision that we make, we have to keep in the mind that the fact is that we are the Board of Health for Sedgwick County. One of the things that I noticed on the news recently is that we had a county commissioner from another state having to stand up in front of the public, saying that he's got an epidemic of measles because of lack of immunizations. I sit there and watch that on TV and said, because of the fact of what we do here in Sedgwick County and in this region, I'm not having to be the one that's standing up before the public explaining why that we have an epidemic that we're having to treat. So I appreciate exactly what our, our Health Department does and the Board of Health here of Sedgwick County, and proclamations like this are important to get the word out that immunizations work.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item B, resolution appointing Eric Bergen to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, interim county counselor. This is a resolution appointing Eric Bergen to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee. He would satisfy these slot that we usually have for a member from the industry, solid waste industry. It's a two-year appointment, and the resolution's in proper form, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item C, resolution appointing Dr. Julie Evans to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, interim county counselor. This is an appointment by Commissioner Cruz to the Animal Care Advisory Board. She is wanting to appoint Dr. Julie Evans, or she is actually a reappointment, I believe, but she's, she would satisfy one of the recommended slots on the committee as a veterinarian, and so the resolution's in proper form. It's a four-year term, four-year appointment, and asks that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I don't, is Julie here today? I don't see her here. So I recommend, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Sarah Dixon to the Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoon.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we take the items D through L all as one, one agenda item.
Mr. Cruz.
I see, I see Melody here. If you guys want to come over here, Melody and Frazier's, and, yeah, all the way over here. So if we have Stephanie, I see Melody, I don't know if Nigel's here, is Hugh? I don't see Denise. Madison, I think I saw her. Yes, Madison. I believe that's it. But I make a motion, we adopt the resolution appointing these members to my advisory board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Our clerk will swear you in.
All right, good morning, commissioners. We've got a group of us here. Do you would like to come join me? There we go. That all works. All right, if you'd raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Very good. Congratulations.
And I just want to say thank you so much. What I'm doing, what I'm trying to do is create an advisory board that is a little bit different. So we are going to focus on positive things that are going on in District 4. Most advisory boards, if you guys serve on them, a lot of people kind of bring issues and problems, and don't get me wrong, you can still bring those to me. But we're going to focus on things that we can, you know, positive change that we can affect in District 4. Do any of you guys want to say anything?
I just want to take a moment and say thank you to Commissioner Cruz for, and other commissioners that are doing the same thing. I think that this is definitely a positive opportunity to engage at the community root level, which I love. So as being a member of the Fourth District, I am proud to serve, and thank you again. Looking, looking forward to good things.
And thank you for your service as well.
Thank, it's, it's good to be back. It's on this side. It's lovely.
Former Commissioner Melody McCray Miller, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes. Ditto. I'm Sarah, and I'm really excited to be part of something positive in the community, and so I'm really looking forward to everything about it. So anyway, thanks. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, guys. Oh.
Just wanted to quickly say thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving in this capacity.
Thank you. Okay.
No one else wants to speak?
I guess not.
Very good. Well, welcome to service. We appreciate you volunteering. The pay isn't real good. Paying you, but it's not enough for what you're going to do. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item M, Project Search graduation recognition.
Good morning, Commissioners. Janelle Livingston, the Assistant Director of the Sedgwick County Developmental Disability Organization. I am so pleased to be here today to recognize our 2019 graduating class of Project Search interns. Project Search is a collaboration with Wichita Public Schools, offering students with intellectual and developmental disabilities in their final year of school, real-world work experience. The interns work about 20 hours a week for 10 weeks in a variety of different internship opportunities at various Sedgwick County departments. The departments that participated in 2019 include Corrections, their Adult Field Service and Juvenile Field Services Office, Exploration Place, Department on Aging, Finance, Print Shop Mailroom, Department on Health and their Preventive Health Office, Comcare Medical Records, SCDDO, the Courthouse Cafe, and the Register of Deeds. And I also want to just look over the audience and thank all the supervisors from these departments that are here and supporting the interns. I know that means a lot to the interns today. Thank you. We really couldn't do it without the supportive departments and supervisors, and we have Linda Kazire, our Sedgwick County Treasurer, and one of her star employees here to talk about their experience as a department with Project Search.
You want to go first?
Yes. Hi, I'm Ashley Thompson. I am always punctual, reliable, responsible, thoughtful, dependable, and respectful. I am so grateful of the work I am doing. Before I became a coworker/mentor, I was an intern during three internships. I am so caring to my friends that I appreciate it. I do fun stuff with the Yacht, many tourists in the Yacht Club at the Yacht at Sedgwick County. I have the best supervisor I could ask for at my job. I have awesome coworkers at my job, and they are really nice. I have a good mom and sister all the time because I am willing, caring to them and my family, and I am so sweet to everybody. And I was learning how to be a good employee before, after becoming a intern. And I was having, and I was learning how to handle stress properly, and I was learning how to be initiative at other tasks before they are available. And I had a certificate in Microsoft Word and Excel from CPRF a couple years ago before Project Search, and I am so thankful to have you all here. Thanks. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Ashley is a delight. I know that a lot of you see her throughout the courthouse every day, and she's a little shining star. She's a rock star at her job. I thank the commissioners for the involvement that you have in Project Search. I still think we need to get more people on board, more departments on board. Ashley's been a full-time employee in the Treasurer's Office since May 11th.
2015.
2015. She went through an interview process, did the testing, just like anyone else that applies for a job in our office, and I can't tell you the importance of giving people opportunities that don't always get the opportunities that other people do get. And she's delightful, we love her. I just don't know what else to say about you, other than you're my good friend.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yes.
Okay, you want to say something else before we go sit down?
Okay. Before I had this job in May 2015, I did 10 key and data entry in the typing test before interviewing, before employment. And I have good people to work with, and they are so respectful to me, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much, you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, some of our entry-level positions, particularly those that have a lot of high turnover, Ashley's been in one in almost four years, which I'm not sure if that sets a record, but it's probably close. And just giving folks a chance and to show what they can do, it's been very helpful. So we are looking for more departments, so if any other departments are interested, please they can contact me. But now, I would like to introduce our 2019 interns. I would mention that we had, we started the year with 10, but we had two employee, two interns that actually started employment prior to graduation. One of those interns is at Center Industries, and he would have been here, but he did not want to miss work. So I want to send congratulations out to Eric Sanchez. Good job, Eric, and we appreciate it, and we're, good luck on the job. The other intern, I'm happy to say, is a Sedgwick County employee, and we have him here today, so we can congratulate him with his class. So now I'd have the interns stand, and we'll hand out certificates. Okay, Aleah Nelson. So Aleah interned at the Register of Deeds, Courthouse Cafe, and Exploration Place. Aleah is independent worker who enjoys a challenge. She's looking for a career in something she can be passionate about and enjoy going to work every day. All right. Andrew interned at Corrections, Juvenile Field Services, the Health Department, and at Goodwill. He's a people person with a great sense of humor, and who's a quick learner and really enjoys working as part of a team. Bethany interned with Finance, Department on Aging, and the Health Department. She is certified in Word and Excel. Bethany's a dependable team player, looking forward to starting a career.
And I would like to thank all the supervisors here that helped us get started in our work, and I would like to thank Project Search.
Casey interned at the SCDDO. She's also certified in Word and Excel. She's also certified in Word and Excel. And she's very detail-oriented, has an excellent memory, and is looking for a position in office or a retail setting.
I'd just like to thank Project Search because it helped me actually get out of my shell a little bit. I wasn't always this outgoing before. And I hope you, young lady, take care of that cough of yours.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
Have a good day. Jessica Curtis. Jessica interned with Juvenile Field Services and the Courthouse Cafe. She is HIPAA-trained and enjoys working as part of the team. Jessica is excited to start a career that builds on her two strongest traits, hard-working and independent.
You want to say something, Jessica?
John Listerman. John interned with Comcare Medical Records, Health Department, and Department on Aging. John really enjoys doing repetitive work and does not get bored. He's one that will work a job nonstop until it's done.
Now, I would like to thank everyone for coming and watching me get my things.
And Montez Miles. Montez began the year interning with the Sedgwick County Print Shop, and he did such an outstanding job, he was hired. They knew a good employee when they saw one. He really likes his team and his job. And, you know, Montez is an excellent representative of Project Search and Sedgwick County. We're so glad to have you here today.
You want to say a couple words?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone in Project Search and in the print shop.
Rosa interned at Corrections, Adult Field Services, Exploration Place, and at Goodwill. She has a great personality and works hard at her own pace. Rosa is particularly skilled at file breakdown, custodial, and sorting clothes.
Want to say something?
No.
Sean interned with Exploration Place, Comcare Medical Records, and the Print Shop. Sean is honest, mature, shows good judgment, is never one to complain about a job task. And Sean actually has a job. He's been hired by Center Industries and he'll start April 23rd. That's our graduating class for 2019. I do want to stop and thank the teacher, Cheryl Hutchinson, and Nate Pogue, our job coach, and all those supervisors and others that have made the program successful. We are hosting a come-and-go reception after the meeting here immediately following. We're in the county boardroom. I hope maybe Commissioners, if you get out of your meeting early enough, you can come join us for some cookies and some punch. Any department folks that are looking for your good employees, you're welcome to come and meet our interns as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you guys so much for being here today. And congratulations to you. It sounds like you've really worked hard. And I am trying to take care of this cough. It's been lingering for like eight weeks now. So if you have any suggestions, please send them my way.
Water and sleep.
Oh, okay. Maybe the water is what I'll do. Congratulations.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Yeah, incredible class. Congratulations. We're very happy for you. I actually have a friend in the audience that I had wanted to say a word. Is Benny Bowman here?
No.
No, he was, is Benny in the back of the room?
Yeah.
Benny, why don't you come up to the podium and talk about how this has impacted your family, like we had talked about yesterday? Benny's a former state representative and a constituent of mine and a friend. And he had called me yesterday because he had some pictures he wanted to show of his granddaughter, but didn't have time to get that put in. But definitely wanted to have you give us your insight.
Jessica Curtis has autism. And of course, when she was born, for the first six months, a year, we didn't know if she was going to survive. And so anyway, what I wanted to bring out is that in autism, they, well, she was first diagnosed with dyslexia. And then later they changed it to autism. But she had trouble. When her mother first noticed she was having trouble was that she didn't learn to talk as soon as the other kids did. And by age three, she decided, well, they must have a problem. And then's when she took her to the doctor. But I don't, somewhere I saw the incidence of autism, I think it was back in the 70s, occurred something like in one out of 120 or 150,000. I have an AMA encyclopedia that is dated or copyrighted 1989. It says the incidence of autism is two or four per 10,000. Last year, in July, in 2018, Dr. Blalock, who I have get his monthly newsletter, and he announced the cause of autism is vaccines, children being vaccinated at a very early age. And of course, there are more, three times as many boys have autism than girls. In July of last year, he said the incidence of autism in males is one out of 50. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No. Thank you for coming and supporting your granddaughter.
Commissioner Meitzner. Thank you, and extend my congratulations to the class. I noted that, Ashley, you mentioned CPRF. And I know that Sean is getting ready to start at Center Industries, and you mentioned somebody else. And it's heartwarming personally to me. I've been on the board at CPRF for a number of years, and our mission is exactly what, at that board, is to do what, have Ashley and Sean and the other gentlemen doing that. Center Industries is part of our mission. And if anybody has a chance to ever go through that operation, it's fascinating what are the things that Center Industries does with people like Sean and...
Who's the other gentleman that you mentioned that works there?
Eric.
Eric. The next time you're flying out on a 737 at Southwest Airlines, every 737 that's flying around the world, all of the windows, the window wells in every plane is made by people like Sean and at Center Industries for Spirit. And it's a fantastic environment. And it's, I'm inspired to see if any of the Commissioners or anybody else want to go take a tour of that operation. It's very impressive. I'm very happy for you all personally, and it's very rewarding for all of us, for our community. And they also make, oh, that's right, and you remind me. And also at Center Industry, every tag on every car, your car tags are made there, including the latest Wichita flag tag. And so, yeah, so when you order your tags and get them in the mail, or if you get them there, they're made by, they're at Center Industries. So again, thank you. And they make some other stuff too, but one of those pretty amazing. They do a lot of stuff. It's great. So, thank you. And thanks for letting me share my appreciation as well. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank Director Livingston for your role in this and for bringing this to the county. I've watched this for a few years now, and I've noticed that every single year, this is bigger and bigger and bigger. This is the largest class, is that correct?
Correct.
And I think that the number of interns that are getting employment is also clearly going up.
Absolutely.
So this is a hugely successful program. I just want to say thank you for that. It's exciting to see the interns come before us each year. I would agree with the comments before me. I've been at Center Industries and looked at the window belts that they make for those airplanes. I come from the aviation industry, and let me just tell you that the quality standards are extremely high. And it's a very technical job, and they demand perfection in what they provide out of that plant. And the folks that are doing tremendous work. It's extremely high skill and has to have perfection every time. So this is not, you know, trying to provide work for someone who's not providing excellent value. They are doing the same job as anybody would do here in Wichita in terms of the highest perfection and the highest quality of work. They're doing tremendous work out of that facility. And so I'm extremely impressed. I've seen the tags. They do excellent work there. I know they, it's kind of fun to watch manufacturing, because I'm kind of that way. I love the manufacturing side of things. And so it's a great place to tour, and I'm so impressed with what they do there. Anyway, I've gotten to know some of the folks that's come through this program. I've seen Ashley, I'd say at least weekly, and she reminds me every week when I see her that this program exists and is doing a great job. And I love it. So thank you for what you do, and congratulations to the interns once again.
Thank you. Thank you, Hal.
Well, Ashley, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Linda, thanks for speaking this morning. Jeanette, thanks for bringing in Project Search. I know that all of our Commissioners are very pleased to be able to host this each year. I know also, the only thing standing between me and your snacks is how long I talk, so... So I'm going to cut it off, and thank you all very much for being here. And I'll let you go to your reception that you're going to have now. And if we can possibly get out early enough, we'll try and join you. Thank you all.
Make a motion to receive a file.
Oh. We have a motion from Commissioner Howell to receive a file, and a second from Commissioner O'Donnell. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll wait just a moment before we continue. Thank you.
Item N, consideration of a third-term renewal of Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services reinvestment grant in the amount of $614,028, and regional grant in the amount of $250,000 to support delivery of evidence-based services to youth and their families and maintain contracted services for substance treatment and day school.
Morning, Glenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Glenda Martin's Director of Corrections. I want to say this is a very hard act to follow. I know we're going to want to go through this. We did have several Project Search interns working in corrections, always enjoy them each and every year. So it was great to have them. So I want to move forward with our grants. We have several to go through this morning. This morning, I'm here to present for your approval the State Fiscal Year 20 reinvestment and regional grant applications to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services. The grant application budget for reinvestment is $614,028, and the regional is $250,000. The renewal application is due May 31st, 2019. The purpose of these grants is to utilize dollars saved by the state in their defunding of home placements. The funds target evidence-based services to support juvenile offenders with moderate and high criminogenic risk factors to remain in their homes and communities. Under the reinvestment grant, Sedgwick County has implemented the Evening Reporting Center as a place to serve coordinated services based on the need-responsivity model. The Evening Reporting Program utilizes evidence-based programming, including aggression replacement training, clinical services directed, excuse me, at youth needs, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, moral reclamation therapy, seeking safety, thinking for a change, as well as family engagement. We have an expediter. A workforce development and substance abuse treatments are on site. There are a total of nine FTEs under the reinvestment grant, and there are no grant-match requirements. Under the regional collaboration, we partner with seven other counties: Butler, Elk, Greenwood, Calley, McPherson, Harvey, and Sumner, to provide evidence-based programming and services that will keep youth in their home, communities, and to reduce recidivism. There are two FTE positions, which include a program manager and a corrections coordinator. This is the third year of the three-year funding, and it ends in 2020. However, I have been told that this funding is going to continue further. Sedgwick County and our regional partners have an interest in providing services and programming that evidence-based and delivery with fidelity. Our regional partners have difficulty providing and sustaining groups due to their loan numbers and in their programs. So on March 29th, our Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, which is called Team Justice, reviewed the application and recommends your approval. And I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Glenda. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for all you do. You are, I feel like this is a good news day for us, apparently, because I love the things we've done so far. But honestly, every time I think about what you do with our Corrections Department, with the adult side and the juvenile side, I love what Sedgwick County is doing. And I know that anytime we do have more evidence-based programming, it's worth every penny. And so I want to say thank you for bringing this to us. I support everything you've talked about this morning. I think this is the low-hanging fruit for us. The more we can do this, the better Sedgwick County is going to be. And with that, I also want to say thank you, and I would like to make a motion that we would approve the application for the grant, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant, and establish establishment of budget authority as provided in the financial considerations section of this request.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. I know that you've been around and briefed each and every one of our Commissioners on this in detail, and actually, you're going to talk about three or four more.
Yes.
Here in just a moment. I don't see any questions. We've supported this in the past. I see that we're going to support it in the future. With that, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item O, consideration of a Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan Grant in the amount of $3,51,441.16 for the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services State Fiscal Year 20 funding and approval to enter into contract with Kansas Legal Services for Youth Attorney Services.
Today, I'm presenting for your approval, State Fiscal Year, the Juvenile Comprehensive Plan Block Grant. The total allocation for this grant is $3,51,441.16. And of this amount, $2,884,113.88 is for graduated sanctions programs, which include our juvenile intake and assessment, our juvenile intensive supervision, case management, and conditional release program. We also have $167,327.28 is for prevention programs. This is an annual grant for Kansas administrative counties who are responsible for implementing their judicial district's comprehensive plan for development, implementation, operation, and improvement of the juvenile community correction services. This funding also includes targeted dollars for prevention. In State Fiscal Year 2020, the plan is for Corrections to bring the case management portion of the services in-house and contract, and continue to contract with Kansas Legal Services for the attorney representation of services. The funding provides for 22 FTE positions at Juvenile Field Services, 12 FTE positions at JIAAC, and one ISO for the prevention case management portion. The amount of funding is the same as last year. As a result, we are also reducing staffing at JIAAC by two part-time positions, one office specialist, and two ISO-1 positions from juvenile ISP. Those positions currently will not be people that we will be losing, but just positions. The Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board participated... The Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board participated in the development of the comprehensive plan, approved the plan and the grant application at their March 29 meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Glenda. We have any questions? Seeing no questions, you did a good job when you came around and briefed each and every one of us.
Thank you.
Therefore, I move that we take the appropriate action and approve this.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item P: Consideration of Application for a Grant in the Amount of $740,966.15 for Kansas Department of Corrections Behavioral Health and Approval to Enter into Contracts with Tile Spay Incorporated for Substance Treatment, Peer Mentoring Services, and an MOU with Comcare for Therapist Case Management Services.
I'm here to present for your approval State Fiscal Year 20 for the Behavioral Health Grant Application to the Kansas Department of Corrections. Again, the grant application budget request is for $740,966.15. The purpose of this funding is to enhance and develop behavioral health programs, interventions in the community, and to reduce recidivism as a result. Community corrections agencies are, that receive previous funding and have since State Fiscal Year 2014. We have submitted a proposal with the intent of sustaining and enhancing strategies that will improve services to our clientele. The State Fiscal Year 20 budget includes funding to sustain current positions that provide cognitive skills programming, peer mentoring, and mental health strategies proven to reduce recidivism. This grant also is to restore a position focused on substance treatment intervention and an additional position to implement and provide continuous quality improvement for batter's intervention program. The grant is due on or before May 1 to the Kansas Department of Corrections. On March 28, our Community Corrections Advisory Board reviewed and approved the grant application.
Good. Thank you, Glenda. Do we have any questions for Glendas? Seeing no questions, again, you did a good job of coming around briefing us in the past. I move that we approve the application for the grant, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant, and take the appropriate action. Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item Q: Consideration of a Grant in the Amount of $3,776,093.63 for the Community Corrections Adult Offender Programs in Sedgwick County.
Welcome back, Glendas.
This is the Glenda Martins Show. Yes, I'm here to present for your approval the State Fiscal Year 20 Comprehensive Plan Grant Application to the Kansas Department of Corrections. The grant, the grant application budget request is for $3,776,093.63, which is a decrease from last year's funding by $110,297. I would just remind the county that we have, over the last five years, taken a decrease each and every year, and it's a little, a little more than $500,000 over the last five years. The purpose of the funding, though, is to plan, carry out, and oversee Community Corrections Act programming in the 18th Judicial District. The Sedgwick County Department of Corrections provides the 18th Judicial District Court with intermediate-level sanctions and supervision options in sentencing felony clients to a term of probation versus placement in the Kansas Department of Corrections. The funding also supports operation of adult residential center. The State Fiscal Year 20 budget includes funding for positions, but due to the budget restraints, we are unfunding 11 FTE positions. This includes nine ISO positions, one program manager, and one office specialist. This grant is due on or before May 1, 2019, to the Kansas Department of Corrections. We anticipate a projected client revenue of $500,000 between the adult intensive supervision and the adult residential service center. We continue to request additional county funds in the amount of 250 to support the adult residential, and funds in the amount of $825,000 to support adult ISP, intensive supervision. On March 28, our Community Corrections Advisory Board reviewed and approved the application. So I would ask, answer any questions you might have about that.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I just want to briefly say thank you so much for explaining all of this stuff to me, as I learned there is so much that I just am blown away by. The one thing that I was blown away by was the fact that our money has decreased, and, you know, we have our juvenile system that we're kind of staying the same, and the numbers are decreasing, but our adult detention, the money is going down, but our numbers are going up. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, that I think that we need to start doing a little bit better and lobbying our state to understand that Sedgwick County is the second-largest county in the state, and maybe we should start doing a little bit better with the money that's awarded to us. As I learn this, I just want to do everything that I can to make sure that we are paying attention to mental health, substance abuse, all of those things, because I feel like it is an interconnected circle. All of these issues that we have in our community, our, I mean, our juvenile system, our adult system, our Sedgwick County jail, our firefighters I see sitting here, you know, I mean, it's all connected, and we have to start thinking of it as that. And I know that we are, but I think that we could do a better job. So thank you for your continued work. I appreciate learning from you, and I appreciate all the work that you do. I think that you have an incredible staff. Every time I go there, or I have toured, I was just very impressed by your operation, and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a motion?
I have a motion. I recommend we approve the application for the grant, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant and the establishment of budget authority as provided in the financial considerations section of this request.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Well, thank you, Glenda. We appreciate what you do. Obviously, from the number of items that you just went through, you have a huge impact on this community, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item R: Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on April 11, 2019.
Welcome back, Joe. We missed you last week.
I missed being here. Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have three items that came from the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of April 11, and we would like to present them for your consideration. Item number one is the 2019 Painted Pavement Marking Project for Public Works. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Traffic Control Services Incorporated, and it's in the amount of $614,934.90. Item number two is the 2019 Asphalt Surface Recycling and Paving Project for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Cutlery Paving Incorporated, and it is in the amount of $1,786,798.06. And our final item, item number three, is the West Yard Fabric Membrane Salt Storage Structure for Public Works, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from A&amp;B Construction LTD, and that's in the amount of $96,451. I'll be happy to try to, try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the items.
I don't see any questions. It looks like Mr. Spears is keeping you busy.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything, Mr. Spears? Very good.
On the minutes, got to make a correction. There's, on item two, the road improvements, it was reported, and we're only doing five miles of two-lane road, and then Linda Kazar calculated at $350,000 a mile, which, which would be right. But we're not doing five miles of two-lane roads. We're doing 7.1 miles of four-lane roads. So you add that with the turn lanes in there, and there's actually 29.25 lane miles. So if you had 28 lane miles, that's, that's like 14 miles of road, of two-lane road. You see what I mean? So the actual cost for a two-lane road would be $120,000. I didn't want that to go on, and that's our fault. We reported it as five miles, but it wasn't. It was 7.1 road miles of four-lane, which is 29.25 lane miles. So sorry to make that more confusing, but I wanted to get the record straight.
Very good. Spoken like a true engineer. Thank you.
Did you survive that party the other night?
It was last night, and I was out at the zoo.
I wonder why you look tired.
It was great. We had...
I'm kidding.
Very good. I don't see any questions whatsoever. Move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Joe, appreciate it. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items S through Z this morning.
Very good. Move to approve Sierra through Zulu.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, interim county councillor. As you heard from our election commissioner yesterday, after the layman, she was happy to report that Senate Bill 130 was signed by the governor. It's the bill that's going to allow people on Election Day, and hopefully in the next general election, be able to vote, and perhaps primary vote at any polling place, assuming the Secretary of State, everybody's on the same page regarding rules and regulations. And I checked yesterday in House Bill 2084, the House bill relating to raising the 911 fees. Still hadn't been signed by the governor, but she probably has another couple of days to get that done, so that should be imminent, so that's about all I have at this time, sir.
Very good. Any questions? Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a, I guess, a comment or maybe a concern about Senate Bill 130. I love the bill. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I don't care if you're left or right on the political spectrum. This is, this is smart legislation, because it, it simply, it reduces the number of provisional ballots for people who have the right to vote, and helps them vote an entire ballot rather than a partial ballot. I think this is smart. But one of the concerns I have is I've been reading some of the comments on social media regarding this bill, and I would tell you, there's a lot of misinformation. I think we have got to do something to, to educate, I guess, why this bill makes sense, and do our best to explain that this is not creating voter fraud opportunities. This is something that allows legal, registered voters a better opportunity to access a legal ballot. It doesn't really open up fraud opportunities in any way. And I think the secret there really is the electronic poll book. Someone chooses to vote, whatever method they choose to vote, once they've started that process, we know about that, and if they try to vote elsewhere another day or whatever, that, that prevents them from, from, from double voting. So there is, there is a thing in the process to take care of that. In fact, on early voting right now, they could theoretically go to a poll site and vote their, their proper ballot style, and, and they could still try to vote, if you wanted to say, someplace else, and we would know about it immediately for the very same reason. The electronic poll book solves that problem. But anyway, I guess my concern is that there's people that have really reacted to this. I think we've got to do something, a PSA or something, to get the information out, that this is actually smart. The second thing I'm concerned about is this. It's been reported widely, even in the press release from the governor's office yesterday, that this is something that's available immediately, and it's not. We got a letter from the Secretary of State saying they have to, to create rules and regulations before we are going, going to be allowed to utilize this new, new opportunity for our voters. And the reality is, I don't want someone to assume the very next election that they can go anywhere, because this could cause some problems. And so the implementation of this is, is pending, depending on when the Secretary of State gets those rules and regs out, and our office and our staff can, can implement those, those rules and regs properly. So this is not an immediate implementation of this law, and I'm afraid that by, all of the reporting I've read, all of it, implies this is something that starts right now. And so we've got to get some messaging out. I'm very concerned about that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
I just want to give a shout-out to our communications team, because I do feel like they do, they are doing a really good job at communicating things. Could we do a little bit better? Possibly so, but I really appreciate the work that you guys do. If we base our communication strategies on comments sections of any social media platform, we will be running circles all day. So I don't believe that we can go off of a comment section. I think that we need to have a good strategy of how to communicate, and I do think that you guys are doing a very good job at what you do. So thank, thank you for your continued work.
Thank you. Well, just to weigh in on this, we, we possibly need to get a little bit better information out on this. I know what Commissioner Cruz is saying. We don't want to react to things, but by the same token, I don't know that people truly understand what the intent of this bill was. Also, Commissioner Howell mentioned that Secretary Schwab sent out a letter to each of us yesterday that said that it isn't in effect immediately, that we need rules and regulations to, to be put in place. What my hope is, and we're going to have to get all the commissioners to weigh in on this and work with our attorney, but my hope is that we don't, I don't believe we need to wait for the Secretary of State's office and Secretary Schwab to come up with the rules and regulations, because I think each county is different. And if he tries to make rules and regulations that apply to 105 counties from a very small county, which voting is different and have different rules and regulations and things that they need to do to make it work for their county, and then we talk about Sedgwick County, where we've got polling places all across the county, it's completely different. It's night and day. What I would hope that he'd put out is word that have each election commissioner put together the rules and regulations for that county and send it up to his office for approval, and that's the direction we ought to go. That keeps the control locally. I don't believe that we need the state telling us how to run an election here in Sedgwick County, especially since each and every one of them are different. So we're going to have to get all the commissioners to see if they agree with me on this, so we may have to have a staff meeting or something to bring it up with in the future, but I don't personally believe that we need to have the state tell us how to, to run our election office. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two clarifications. Number one, I'm not criticizing our communications department in any way. They do a great job, and I love what they do. I just see this as an opportunity that we, we need to realize there is, there is misinformation out there in the community on what this bill does and why, and why it does it. The second part of this bill, of course, helps with the signature aspect of the mail, mail ballot, mail ballots that come in. And again, there's been, there's been some history of us not accepting a signature, and so a ballot would be thrown out because the signature was, was wrong. And this, this allows an opportunity for that voter to clarify and to rectify that problem. But the second part, of course, is this, you know, this, this allows more voters be able, be able to vote on a ballot on the front end rather than have to use a provisional ballot and have a part, part of a ballot cast, part of, part of a ballot disregarded. So this is really, I think, excellent legislation, and I just see an opportunity for us to, to work hard at trying to provide that information out to the community, because I've heard more negative than positive. I just want to, I just want to make sure we do that, and, and not criticizing our communication staff in any way. With respect to working with Secretary of State Schwab at the state, we're one of the four counties that actually has a, a election commissioner. I think we are leading the state in terms of, we are, I think we've got the best equipment. We have invested in that equipment. It's designed to be audited. We're continuing to lead on legislation. We led last year on, a couple of years ago on the audit legislation, and we got that passed, and we've actually started doing audits now. I think we have some interest in helping with the voter, expired voter ID issue that we experienced in the, the school bond election we just did a couple of weeks ago. The reality is, I think we have a good relationship with the Secretary of State. Well, we ought to suggest, if you will, the rules and regs that we would like to see him, him allow us to do. And lastly, this is a permissive law. It doesn't mandate that we do anything. It simply allows us to do it when it makes sense, and if we have the right equipment in place. And so if there's any, anything that's not safe and fair for the voters that allows any type of fraud to happen, we're not going to go forward. The reality is, it's got to continue to be safe and secure. So with that, the voters of Sedgwick County can rest assured that we're very vigilant to make sure that the security of our elections is, is good. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on legislative issues? Seeing nothing? Next item, please.
Other.
Does any commissioners have anything that they'd like to discuss during other? Does any commissioners have anything that they'd like to discuss during other? The only other thing that we have during other is don't forget about tire recycling coming up this weekend. It's a free event, and it's a great way of getting tires out of the environment. Next item, please.
Executive session.
We do not have a need for an executive session during the Board of County Commissioners meeting. We'll skip that. With that, that concludes everything from the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners meeting, and I would like to adjourn that meeting and like to call to order the meeting for the Governor and body of Fire District Number One for Wednesday, April 17th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda, but if anyone would like to speak, now is an opportunity. Seeing no one? Next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number One, recess into executive session for 30 minutes until 10:45, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel regarding potential applicants for employment, and that the Board return to this room from executive session again no sooner than 10:45.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
We're in recess? We'll go to the big conference room.
Down the hall. Let's be in.
Every 12 minutes, someone in the U.S. dies from suicide. It's the 10th leading cause of death in America, killing more than 44,000 people each year. Truth is, most people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die, but need help staying alive.
When I felt suicidal, I came to the Community Crisis Center.
A 24-hour resource center for mental health assistance and suicide prevention.
Where I spoke with a therapist and discussed my feelings.
By providing face-to-face interaction.
It was determined I'd be admitted to the Crisis Observation Unit.
For crisis treatment planning.
To work with a case manager to come up with a plan to ensure my safety.
Clinical staff are ready to help.
They are always friendly and supportive.
Going above and beyond.
To help me if I begin having increased urges to hurt myself.
With the encouragement and support from the Community Crisis Center.
I am currently 323 days self-harm free.
Educating yourself and others on the warning signs can play a crucial role in saving someone else's life. If you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, take it seriously and get help. Call the Community Crisis Center today at 316-660-7500.
Welcome to the new tag office located at 5620 East Kellogg Drive in Wichita. This space will be a lot larger. We will have a total of 25 clerks working in this location. We will be able to provide better efficiencies to better serve our customers. In this location, they'll be able to do any ADA transactions, registration renewals, and title work. You will not be able to get your driver's license here. But the other addition is, the Kansas Highway Patrol is not going to be located in this The three satellites that we are consolidating are at the Brittany Center at 21st and Woodlawn. The other one in Wichita is located at 21st and Mays Road, behind Dellins at Chadsworth Shopping Center. And then, our third one is in Derby, located at 212 Greenway. We felt that as a managerial decision, it would be better to combine those three offices into one larger office, after we've seen such great success at the 2525 West Douglas Tag Office. It's going to reduce some staff time. It's going to reduce stress time. It's going to improve morale, and it's just going to be better for the citizens overall. I know all the small towns would love to have their own tag office. So, what we're working on right now is the possibility of getting a kiosk solution. Johnson County has got them in their tag offices, but I don't know if theirs is the solution that I'm looking for for Sedgwick County. I've been working with Kansas Department of Revenue on some different options, but it'd be very limited to where we could put those kiosks. So, that's why we're going to do a request for proposals, see what other options are out there, to get us the best fit at the best price for our county. You can renew by mail or via the ICANN app. Customers are welcome to go to the office at 2525 West Douglas. I also highly recommend not waiting until the last day of the month to come. That's when we seem to always be the busiest. We always have been, and we always will be. One of the best things that we've ever implemented in Sedgwick County is the online virtual waiting system, Qless. You can go out to the county website, and you can get on via any kind of electronic device. You can get your virtual spot in line. It will send you text messages on how long your wait times are, and it's been very, very, very helpful. The satellite offices at Brittany, Chadsworth, and Derby will close at end of business on Friday, December 7th, and then the new Kellogg Tag Office will open at noon on Monday, December This new location will be more convenient for our customers and staff. I am happy that we are finally able to complete this project.
I want to welcome everyone to this very important event that's involving our EMS. Our EMS is something that I am very proud of in Sedgwick County, and have fought hard to make sure that we keep it the premier organization that it is, and it's one of only a handful across the United States that is fully accredited. Post eight was originally, came into service in 1991, and it's been an active post ever since that period of time. However, if you'd have seen it just not too many months ago, this was kind of a disaster, actually. When I first walked through it, it needed an awful lot of work.
Several years ago, the plan was to tear this place down, buy some land somewhere else, and build a new one for $1.9 million. We kind of asked some questions about that and said, let's think about doing something else. We ended up with this, a remodel for a little over $400,000. That's still not cheap, but it saved $1.5 million, and I think we're going to have a fantastic facility here. This is an example of making good decisions, of supporting our first responders in public safety in a cost-effective way. I think the taxpayers can be proud of what we have. Our EMS folks can be proud of what we have, and I look forward to this facility continuing to serve the community for many, many years to come.
I think it's a great improvement from what it was. It definitely allows for an additional truck in here and more space to move around. We're not sitting on top of each other. We have a place to cook, so that's great.
I was stationed up here for over 10 years, and over that time, you saw just a subtle decline in the facility, but, boy, they've come in and just redone everything nice and ready to come back and serve this part of the community again.
This is a big day for the community up here in the north end of Sedgwick County. We renovated this building for $400,000. Originally, the project was scheduled to be a total demolish and redo and cost $1.9 million. We saved $1.5 million, but at the same time, we have a terrific facility that's been renovated. It's in a perfect location, and I think the crews will really enjoy it, and I think
I want to welcome everyone to this important event. Really, a core priority that we have here in Sedgwick County is having a safe and secure community, and that's provided with our EMS as a very key part of it. Sedgwick County continuously looks for ways to enhance our services to support our residents. This new post will expand our coverage and improve our response times to the outer areas of Sedgwick County. We also want to note that just yesterday, we established a new ambulance service in Garden Plain, and that provides better coverage on the western half of Sedgwick County. So, we're responding to the needs of our residents across Sedgwick County.
Thanks to all of you who are here this afternoon to help us with this ceremony to open this outstanding facility. This new facility, I think, is strategically located, and it's part of our long-term strategic plan to provide for growth in our community and in our county. And its location here, with its capacity for two crews, accomplishes that goal. It's a pre-engineered building, and one of the advantages of doing that is that it saves us quite a bit of money. Originally, this project, I think, was on the books for as much as $1.7 million, and I think we end up having just right around $1.1 million in a facility. I think this will be a great facility. It'll serve all our citizens in total, but especially those in northeast Sedgwick County. It's a great facility, and I'm glad that you all are here to help us celebrate the opening.
Very much looking forward to it, because right now, we're sharing space with a fire station, or in a fire station, and this is going to give us the room that we need to really do our jobs much better. As a paramedic, this is a great building. That'll help us serve the citizens in Sedgwick County and in this part of Wichita.
This is going to help northeast Sedgwick County. As most people who reside out here, who have occasion to travel out here know, there's been somewhat of an explosion in both residential and commercial and business activity. So, that means a lot more people, and that comes with that, is need for emergency services. I am really pleased that we were able to get this project completed before I left office, and I know that our project services department, Tonya Cole and Sandy Angelov, worked real hard with the construction company and the architects to get this done while I was still here. And although I'm not the focus of this project, it is kind of fun to be part of the ribbon-cutting The Wichita Cedric County Law Enforcement Training Center is a combined facility with personnel from the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. The training center requires all applicants seeking the position of police officer, deputy sheriff, or detention deputy to pass a series of physical agility tests. The tests are designed to evaluate the physical fitness, the physical agility, and the strength of the applicant. Here is what you can expect and what you will need to do to pass the physical agility tests. All applicants should wear clothes they can move in and be comfortable in. Athletic clothing, like a tee shirt and shorts or sweatpants, is a good example of proper clothing to wear for the physical agility tests. Also, wear athletic shoes with good traction. Sandals are not allowed. The first physical agility test is push-ups. You will do as many as you can in one minute. Here is what a proper push-up looks like. Your feet should be no more than shoulder width apart, hands in line with your shoulders, and hip and torso in a straight position. You will be required to go all the way down within inches of the mat or until the elbows are at 90 degrees, and then back up. Be sure to maintain a tempo during the test so each push-up is done correctly and counted. The second physical agility test is sit-ups. Once again, you will be asked to perform the maximum number of sit-ups in one minute. Here is what a proper sit-up looks like. Notice that your knees are slightly bent. Your feet are flat on the ground and arms crossed over the chest. You will then lift your upper body from the mat until you are at or near a 90-degree angle or when the elbows are on the knees, then back down. Only proper sit-ups will be counted. The third physical agility test is called the Illinois Agility Run. This is a timed course that assesses an applicant's speed and agility. You will begin the test on your stomach with your fingertips behind the starting point and feet together. On the start command, you will get to your feet as quickly as possible and sprint to the top of the course and touch the line with one foot. You will then sprint back down to the bottom end of the course at the starting area. You will then weave through a series of cones to the top end, then weave back. After completing the weave, you will sprint to the line at the top of the course, touching the line with your foot, then sprint back down to the bottom of the course and finish line. Time will stop after you cross the finish line. You must finish the course without knocking over any cones. The final physical agility test administered is called the multi-stage run, or the beep test. The purpose of this test is to measure cardiovascular fitness and maximum oxygen uptake, or the VO2 max. You will start on a designated line and be required to run a distance of 20 meters to another line marked at the other end. An audible signal, or beep, will tell you when to run each time. As the test progresses through a series of levels, the time between the beeps will become shorter. You will continue to run from one end to the other until you are unable to keep up with the pace of the test. The monitor of the test will signal a warning if you fail to reach the line in time. You will have to stop if you fail to reach the line on two consecutive attempts. The monitor will announce the level in which you reached before stopping. Please remember the level you reached so it can be recorded later. In order to pass the physical agility test required by the Wichita Cedric County Law Enforcement Training Center, the applicant must complete each test and obtain a minimum cumulative score of 20 points. Scores are based on an individual's age and gender. You are encouraged to practice these tests before your evaluation. They can easily be practiced anywhere without any special equipment. Wichita Police Department applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3810, or online at www.wichita.gov/wpd. Cedric County Sheriff applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the
Welcome you today. Having a safe and secure community is very important in Sedgwick County. The Office of Medical Director plays a key role in providing clinical leadership and oversight for all aspects of pre-hospital patient care. This applies to all medical providers and agencies throughout the emergency medical system that we have here in Sedgwick County. Some of you may remember this building as the former Murdoch Tag Office, but through extensive remodeling, we're thrilled to have Dr. Gallagher and his team here in such a great facility today. The entire project took approximately five months to complete. Total cost for $458,550.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. John Gallagher. I'm the System Medical Director for the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, and the very excited and proud new occupant of this building. While we are extremely grateful to Chief Leake and Fire District Number One for having housed our department for so long, it is just incredible to be in a facility like this. We manage the pre-hospital protocols, the guidelines which all of the EMTs and paramedics use to provide patient care, but we also provide the testing that is required to ensure competency within our providers. Everyone who works within our system has to pass written tests on clinical knowledge as well as the protocol familiarity, and then they have to pass physical hands-on testing to make sure that they have the necessary physical skills to perform the procedures appropriate for their level. And then, at the advanced level, our advanced EMTs and paramedics come into this simulation center to perform simulated patient encounters to make sure that they can take that mental knowledge and apply it in a real-world setting. So, this facility will dramatically improve our effectiveness.
So, all five commissioners came together to make this a reality for our Office of Medical Director today, and I want to thank all five commissioners, the other four, for help making this happen.
We are in the outdoor area of our simulation center. We have the ambulance simulator right behind me. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls and have it very realistic to the environment that they're in every day.
This is the control room and so all of the information from out in the simulation center is wired back here. One of the things that's important to quality testing is that the person who's in front of the camera doesn't feel like that. They have to feel and believe like they are out in the real world delivering real patient care. And so by bringing all of that information outside, piping it to a control room, we can have the exact same outcomes but without that person feeling like they've got a false environment. In the face of an emergency, you don't get to pick your EMT or your paramedic. So one of our jobs is to make sure that anyone who shows up at your door or at your car accident or your place of work is somebody that you would be happy choosing to provide your health care.
We're here to teach about fire safety. You guys know what to do about fire safety?
That door's hot. What do we do if the door's hot? Do we go out? No, we don't open that door because we don't want all that hot smoke and fire in the area. Okay.
Sedgwick County Fire District One would like to remind citizens that during periods of high fire danger, there are precautions you can take to help minimize the risk of starting a fire. Periods of high fire danger are defined by low humidity, long periods of very little moisture, and very high winds that are usually greater than 15 miles per hour. When fire danger is high, there are numerous causes that can ignite a fire with very little fuel involved. Here are some precautions that you can take. Be aware when discarding cigarettes, cigars, or other similar products. Ensure trailer chains don't drag on the ground and spark. Properly maintain vehicles to prevent sparks or flammable materials from coming out of the exhaust system. Completely extinguish all recreational burns such as barbecue grills, chimeneas, and fire pits with abundant amounts of water. Use extreme caution when welding or using a blowtorch. Use spark arresters on portable gasoline-powered equipment such as lawn mowers, weed eaters, edgers, and chainsaws. Remember, open burns will not be allowed on high fire danger days even with valid burn permits. Please call Sedgwick County Fire District One at 660-3473 or visit www.cedriccounty.org if you have any questions.
Well, we have 600 miles of paved roads and so if we're on a six-year program, that means we redo 100 miles of road every year. And this one that you see today is a pavement rejuvenation.
This is actually a project that's about, one of about six or seven tools in the toolbox we use in Sedgwick County to refurbish our roads.
They heat up the pavement and they mill off or grind up the top inch and they recycle that. That goes back down on the road. Also with that, they put an inch of virgin material on top of that.
When they get done, this road's as if it's a brand-new road. So although this road's 11 years old and it cost $3 million a mile to fabricate this road originally, we can preserve this asset indefinitely.
Some taxpayers might think it's a waste of money. They can't see with the naked eye that these roads need something done, but that's what preventive maintenance is all about. There are microcracks in that pavement that lets water get down into the sub-bays and with that, we have freeze and thaw cycle in Kansas, which is really bad, and that's when your potholes start.
Are we wasting money or are we saving money? Well, the answer to that, of course, is we're spending some money, but the intent, of course, is to save money over time.
You keep good roads good. The road is an asset. It is not an expendable that you throw away.
Sedgwick County does it right because we've got great staff, they have excellent skills, they have good judgment, and we invest in Sedgwick County to make sure these roads are done at the right time with the right process. And with that, this road today is a brand-new road.
Really want to thank those who were in Sedgwick County 47 years ago who focused on making the Sedgwick County Zoo a reality. It's now the state's largest tourist attraction. We are proud of it because it demonstrates what we can do when we work together. As a partner, we've been honored to be part of this process throughout the planning. We are excited about the master plan along with the private sector. Think about both now and think about what our future is going to become. Let's build a foundation for the next generation.
We're thrilled to announce today our final master plan that will guide us through the next 25 years. The guiding model throughout the plan will be to do better for all the resident animals and exemplify what we did for elephants just a few years ago. We'll be reconfiguring the zoo to add more space for animals and even better experiences for our visitors. The first projects on the list are items that will address a few of the zoo's immediate needs: a new entry, expanded leopard habitat, and an electric-powered train. Once those items are complete, we'll be able to think bigger. What if you could ride through the air with orangutans swinging next to you just a few feet away? Imagine watching your son or daughter get married in front of a 20,000-gallon stingray habitat. Or imagine waking up with a giraffe looking through your hotel window, right here in Wichita, Kansas. Our city has a great deal of momentum right now and the zoo is thrilled to be part of that. Let's take just a moment, if we can, to talk about master plans and how organizations like our zoo accomplish them. Like others, we will tackle this in phases and that is how we've accomplished so much of what we previously have accomplished out of the old master plan. It's by looking at what's most critical and factoring that in with what's doable. What we do know is the first phases of this effort, as Jeff described, needs to think about a new entry, Wayne, and that's really a key part of our first phase. With the right combination of opportunity and partnership, that this first phase will include at least one expanded animal exhibit and that we think would likely be the hammer-leopard exhibit. Your Sedgwick County Zoo will continue to grow and expand and it will reflect positively on this community, be a great resource for this community and our families and the visitors that visit this area with us. So thank you all for spending a warm, windy afternoon with us out here at the zoo and we hope you'll participate as we move forward with a lot of the exciting things in our master plan.
I-135, I-235, and K-254 were built in the mid-'60s to early-'70s. K-96 was built in the early 1990s. Today, over 93,000 vehicles per day use that interchange. Over 9,100 are semi-trucks. By 2050, over 160,000 vehicles per day are projected to use the North Junction.
You want freight coming to you and you want freight to be able to get to the world. The people of south-central Kansas understand that essentially it's vital that we improve that choke point or bottleneck.
You have cars just lined up, stopped, engines running, gasoline wasted. It's not cost-efficient, it's not economical. Well, I thought we had a very good meeting with the Kansas Department of Transportation. We were gratified in the meeting to learn that the green phase, which is a foundational stage for this project, is a go and work should be started, you know, later in 2019. The gold phase and the orange phase to follow will be the phases where we really see some progress, but we have to start at the foundation. We need the citizens really to reach out when and where they can to both congressmen, senators, and state legislators to say that this is important to them. This is something that has serious safety consequences for all the people here in south-central Kansas and we want everyone to know that we're working for your safety but also to improve transportation and to improve what is truly a quality-of-place issue.
Just the basic fire knowledge that I got was really how much further I can push myself physically and mentally than maybe I ever thought I could before.
I've learned so much. One of the great things about being in the academy here at Sedgwick County is that we have a great opportunity to learn with so many different people.
The hardest part for me was probably adjusting to actual fire scenarios. That's the first time I've ever been in a situation like that where it was actually hot.
We had to get up a slide so we can get a flag and a class flag and it took us three tries, but finally came up with a plan and able to get it. We all came together as a team. To get everything done, we worked really good together. All the guys we have are great, great people.
We got lots of reps in, lots of live fires, learned what it's actually like to be under heat and perform under stressful situations. Learning to work as a team with eight other individuals on a daily basis.
We had to do like a kind of a confined space training with our air packs in the early weeks. You got to go through pipes, climb upstairs, ladders, all with your full gear on.
You actually got to see like firsthand how a building will collapse and that was awesome.
Doing the controlled burnout in Garden Plain, we got to do some really great training on an actual house. That's training that's hard to beat.
Just did different things, like we would stretch at the beginning of every session and we could go for a jog, anywhere from a mile and a half to maybe two and a half miles. Being part of a team and all of you trying to strive to achieve the same goal and get through something tough together.
And I can't wait to be a part of a job that I just love to go to every day and enjoy thoroughly and also being able to do something positive in our community.
We are Sedgwick County Fire District One, recruit 51801.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Crafton with the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. Did you know that your first DUI offense can cost you up to a $1,000 fine and an automatic six-month suspension of your driver's license? Last year alone, there were nearly 2,000 alcohol-related accidents. Of those, 25% resulted in an injury or loss of at least one life. One in four occupants in a DUI-related accident are either injured or killed as a result of the collision. All DUI accidents can be avoided. When you go out for the evening, plan ahead. Use ride-sharing, have a designated driver, or call a family member for a ride home.
Buckle up.
Get a ride home.
And don't drink and drive.
Welcome to Sedgwick County Division of Corrections. Come join our team. We have an extensive range of facilities and programs. You could work with either adults or juveniles. We have job opportunities at the Juvenile Detention Facility, Juvenile Residential Facility, Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, Home-Based Supervision, Juvenile Field Services, Adult Field Services, Adult Residential and Work Release Program, and Criminal Justice Alternatives.
My name is Trey Davis and I'm an intensive supervision officer. I'm on the high-risk team for probation, so I meet with my clients weekly. I help them get jobs, help them get into treatment, make sure they're attending treatment. I go to court for them if they're in jail. I'm basically the middleman between my client and the judge. I do love my job. I like meeting with my clients. It's rewarding when they complete probation, when they get off successfully. It's fun to see them grow into people of society that are successful.
My name is Anna Aguilar and I'm a correction worker at JDF. I supervise the kids on a daily basis. I hold them responsible for their expectations every day, issuing out discipline when they don't follow through with their expectations and I try to build rapport with them. Always wanted to work with kids directly to try to make a difference in their lives.
My name is Samuel Urbain. I'm a senior correction worker here at Juvenile Detention Facility, helping out people, helping out kids, helping out, you know, troubled youth and, you know, just getting a good impact out of them with all my experience and all the backgrounds that I've inquired. It takes somebody special to work in this department and you got to be ready to make a positive change in people's lives. a positive change in people's lives because they're going to be back in the community.
Our mission is to provide a continuum of evidence-based correctional services in our community, which promotes public safety and accountability while supporting positive behavior change in an effort to reduce recidivism. Sedgwick County offers a competitive benefits package: health, dental, and vision insurance, Caper's Retirement Plan, 457B Pre-Tax Retirement Plan, dependent care and medical flexible spending accounts, vacation leave, sick leave, and 10 paid holidays.
Come join us.
Come join us.
Apply now. Go to hrepartners.com for more information on job functions. Between the thin red line, the thin blue line, and the thin white line lies the thin gold line. This narrative lines represents those who are rarely seen but always heard and appreciated: the calm voice in the dark, the heroes behind the scenes, the golden glue that holds it all together, 911 dispatchers.
Sedgwick County 911, what is your emergency?
The 911 dispatcher is essential. When I'm en route to a call, they're continuously giving us updates, so I know what's going on before I get to the call. And then when I arrive at the call, sometimes I'm the only person, so they're my eyes and ears when I can't be.
One thing that drew me in the most is I love helping people, and then I started and realized that I love how much we help people, and the excitement every day is different.
911 dispatchers are extremely important at the Sedgwick County Fire Department. They're the first ones on scene. They're the ones that have the first contact with our citizens that are having this emergency. They are the ones who notify what units need to go to a particular emergency. They're the ones who tell us how many units need to go. They are a vital success to the outcome of all the calls that we run. We couldn't do that job without them.
I really wanted to be that person after you go through something really traumatic and you have to call 911, and then you finally get that calm voice, and you're like, okay, it's going to be okay.
Hectic, but very rewarding, because you never know what's going to happen on that next phone call, whether you're going to be saving a life.
My favorite part about the job is the adrenaline. I love the fast pace when things are getting busy, when we're getting chases, or when we're really helping someone that I know needs to help.
If you're interested in being the first, first responder, email workfor911@sedgwick.gov or call (660) 4977 for more information.
Wichita was built on a flood plain. Early settlers even called the area from hillside to ridge road "swampland." In the 1800s, several large floods hit the area, but it wasn't until after the 1944 flood that left more than 5,000 temporarily homeless, the city started a flood control committee. That's where M.S. Mitch Mitchell, or Big Ditch Mitch, comes into the story. After just 10 days on the job as an office engineer, he was sent out into the field.
They made me wade through about a foot and a half of water. Now, I'm in my office dress and shoes, and they made me wade through the water to get to the road where the drive was.
And what started out as a six-week commitment to the project led to a lifelong career with the City-County Flood Control Office.
A lot of planning went into how many of those local flooding systems can be incorporated in that particular project, and the floodway was the only way to do it.
But convincing everyone it was a good idea was another story.
There was a tremendous amount of objection to the acquisition of Rightofway for that. "We don't have any flooding up here, and you're ruining my field, and you're cutting off the highway," and all of those things, that they did not recognize the importance of that diversion.
The design for the Wichita Valley Center floodway was modeled after one Mitchell saw in California.
They were very helpful. They sent us their manuals for construction of the lining, for the maintenance of the lining, how these things should be under-drained system, so they gave us the design work for what you see on the paved canal now. The main project was the diversion of the Little Arkansas River, some water from the Chisholm Creek system, and some water from the Arkansas River through what became known as the Big Ditch. There were people said, "You can't do that. You can't put that little river water in the big river." Well, we did.
And that Big Ditch has been his legacy. Tony Giuliano is the art director for Sedgwick County. You've probably seen his work, but when he's not designing for the county, he's got his whistle on the soccer pitch.
He looked at me and he said, "You're skinny, you're young, you can run, you should ref soccer." Fifteen years later, I'm still doing it.
Moving up the ranks.
And it's opened up a lot of doors for me. I ref at the local level, and the Juco, and the NAI levels, all the way up to Division One.
Achieving a collegiate-level national badge.
It's exhilarating. I really enjoy that challenge. I mean, at that level, you're reffing the best athletes.
Refing around 60 matches a year.
You'll find a common phrase in the referee community. It's "for the love of the game." Soccer, to a lot of us, is a big part of our lives, whether played it, watch it, or referee it, or all three, and it's giving back to the game.
Something that helps ease the stress of his day job.
It just allows me to accept and really take on any challenge in a stressful environment at work.
Anything else need to come for the fire board before we adjourn?
Saying nothing, we adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you.